So, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. We'll call the meeting to order, and we'll salute the flag first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of the United States of the Republic. And for which it stands, with its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind. At this time, I'll have Anita read the warrant from her position over there, so she doesn't have to trip on the cords here.
You hear me here now?
Just get closer to it, that's all.
Okay, it's better?
Just talk louder.
Okay. I've been told to talk louder, so I will try. I'm not saying much, just the beginning of the warrant that you have anyway. To either of the constables in the town of Rutland and the county of Worcester, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify among the inhabitants of said town, (cough) excuse me, qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs, to meet at the Glendale Elementary School Auditorium, 65 Glendale Road, in said Rutland on Thursday, the 21st day of November 2024, at 6:00 in the evening. You're then here to act on the following articles.
Thank you, Anita. Everyone that is a town resident should have a clicker with you. Does anybody happen to have an extra clicker that they may have bought back from the annual town meeting in May, number 131, we are looking for? I wasn't here to remind you to do it, so I apologize, but we are looking for one clicker that we are short if you happen to have it. It will not go through tonight if you're going to try to vote on that anyways. So, just so you're aware, if you'd like to speak on an article after I ask for discussion, please come to the mic here directly in front of us, state your name and address, and then, once you're called on from myself, you will be allowed to address the particular article. We are going to try to stay on the particular article that we're speaking about. And I put my glasses on, it will make these small words a lot bigger. We'll start with Article 1, to see if the town will vote to amend the votes taken on Article 3 and Article 5 on May 11, 2024, annual town meeting appropriating the fiscal year 2025 operating budget for the town and the Wautusut Regional School District by the supplementing, decreasing, or otherwise adjusting the funds sourced, used, and appropriated made through thereunder to include those amounts set forth below and further to increase the total fiscal year 2025 general operating budget accordingly. The numbers are in front of you or on the screen behind me. I will not read those. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 1 as printed in the warrants.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made, second. Recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on Article 1.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those who-- I'm sorry. Do you want to talk as well? You--we'll let Austin go first, Mrs. Quill.
It's date eight, of approximately $1,500. There we go. Can you hear me better now? Still not that great. Yeah, I'll try to yell. Yelling's better?
Yeah.
We also had to make some assumptions about local receipts. On a positive note, we're actually expecting an increase of $5,804 in local receipts due to higher trends. At the time, we had not closed out the previous fiscal year, and we weren't allowed to budget higher. We had a pretty good year closing out. We can thus collect higher from local receipts. And also trying to rely less on one-time funding sources. We allocated a certain amount of American Rescue Plan Act funds. We are reducing our reliance on American Rescue Plan Act funds by just over 109,000, instead focusing on reliable long-term funding sources. The net adjustment in revenue is a positive $125,217 in revenue adjustments. On the expenditure side, we have carefully allocated these funds to the areas of greatest need. And we realized we had some additional resources and necessity for budget adjustments. We reached out to town departments and asked for their needs. On the general government side, this includes extending hours for key administrative positions in the assessors and towns clerk offices, funding our very first full-time town accountant and finance director, investing in our IT infrastructure to improve efficiency and service delivery. Most importantly, we can actually pay our internet bills and not rely on ARPA to pay our internet bills. Public safety. After July 1, a select board approved an intermenospo agreement with the towns of Boylston and West Boylston to expand our animal control services. Most of this expansion is actually covered by assessments to those two communities. I think the net cost to the town of Rutland is actually only $200. The remaining of the increase for public safety covers unanticipated repairs for our fire department's ladder truck. On the public works side, funds are allocated to acquire a GIS license to maintain mapping for our infrastructure, both water sewer and stormwater infrastructure, addressing projected budget shortfalls in our waste disposal line item and vehicle fuel, and also establishing a new line item for town buildings' electricity expenses. Again, those expenses were paid for with ARPA funds, one-time funds. We want to thank our partners at the Wautusut Regional School District. Realizing extra Chapter 70 revenue, they reduced the assessment for the town of Rutland. The decrease in education is--will help offset some of the increases in the other line items. And also, in an effort to be fiscally prudent, realizing that future budget years may be challenging, we're looking to recognize an early payoff of Fire Engine 3 and a police cruiser to not only save money in future years, but also save future year interest payments. So, the overall key considerations in this budget revision and ask for your support are aligned with personnel adjustments, operational enhancements, fiscal sustainability, and again, relief from our educational partners. I believe that these proposed adjustments are in the best interests of the community, addressing our immediate needs, planning for the future, and ensure that we can continue to provide high-quality resident--high-quality services to the residents. Thank you.
Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Carol Benoit, Precinct 1, Turkey Hill Road. Sorry. Is--to Mr. Seganowitz, are--and this says 147, 960. You mentioned 125?
Yes. Great questions. The additional 20-some-odd thousand is also inclusive of excluded debt service for projects that were excluded, I think, several years ago in preparing the overall levy budget. The excluded debt figures that we received at the time were approximately 20-some-odd thousand dollars lower. This is not a general fund budget. This is excluded debt service. So, the overall increase on the levy is the additional $22,000.
Thank you. So, let me read what I prepared. According to the chart accompanying Article 1, it looks like we're going to either--we're going to decrease or increase in revenue, the 109, for the ARPA. So, is that--
Decrease.
So, we're taking--does that--what is our balance, I guess, for ARPA right now in the bank or the account?
So, it's a little bit of a tricky question. I may defer it quickly to our Finance Director. So, there are obligated funds and there are unobligated funds. So, obligated means essentially we have a contract in place. I believe we have around, is it 300 to 400,000? Is that correct, Donna? Of funds remained, but some of those are obligated for projects. Essentially, they just haven't been spent yet.
So, we don't know how much there is, or are there 300?
So, the Select Board earlier this year, there was a balance of approximately, I think, you know, $800 to $900,000. So, we did a couple of projects, right? We repaired the library in the public safety roof at the tune of approximately $300,000. We paid a portion of the previous year's Wautusut assessment, but I think cash on hand essentially is what you're asking right now, is approximately $400,000.
So, since we need to allocate approximately $400,000 by December 31, about 40 days from now, what are the plans to allocate that? And I'm asking because it relates to spending here.
Excellent question. So, there are a few projects that are already obligated for current projects. So, there's some interim facility adjustments to the annex and town hall facility. There, we are looking to also have an early payoff of the Wautusut Regional School Assessment. Costs associated with--still, we're purchasing some COVID supplies. We will fully expand. We don't want to return any money to the federal government by December, by the end of this year. So, we will probably have to go back to the Select Board, inclusive of this $109,000, to reallocate that for another project.
Okay. Based on my looking at things, Mr. Moderator, I'm wondering if I could amend or at least propose an amendment to Article 1.
If you choose to. If you do an amendment, it has to be printed and given to the town clerk before the end of the meeting.
But now, if she wants it now, or only if it passes? To amend the motion, I would--of Article 1, would read, "To see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken on Article 3 of the May 11, 2024 annual town meeting appropriating the fiscal year 2025 operating budget for the town by appropriating"--I've got a figure in here, and I'm not sure if it's right. I think it's about $253,082 from the ARPA funds that we have on hand, and to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken on Article 5, to use the Chapter 70 refund of $105,122 to offset the remaining 20--that's why 2025 Wautusut Regional School District Assessment." And the--there's another chart of my assumptions. So, monies might be--need to be changed, but what I'm looking to do is to use ARPA funds rather than raising town tax levy, raising it more by approximately $253,000, and using the ARPA monies that we have, and putting school budget to school budget.
Does this amendment receive support? Motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the amendment, and amendment only?
You better explain, everyone can hear. The mics are just echoing. I'm wondering if I can hear guys in there. So, what would you--if this--through you--
So, I think the thing you've got to do is you've got to talk closer to the mic is the best you can do with the mics that we have here.
I can try.
That's not normal.
It's very fuzzy. Can you hear me if I do this?
No.
So, if I can succinctly say it-- That's bad. Rather-- Rather than appropriating tax levy-- Put it way away. No, Mike. I'll run it out. Rather than appropriating tax levy, what I am proposing that we do is to use ARPA fund. It's one-time expense, I underscore revenue, I understand that, but we have ARPA money if we use that instead of raising tax levy money and lowering ARPA anyway. So, it's--that's what I'm looking for, and I'm separating, as of Articles 3 and 5 from the May meeting, and asking that Article 5 be amended in this, to use Wautusut Regional School refund from Chapter 70 funds and to pay the Wautusut Regional School District Assessment with those same funds. I'm trying to keep like things to like and not increase the tax levy.
So, if we're okay with what-- Said. If we're okay with what she said, I'd like to have the town council make a comment before we have any further discussion at this time.
Because I would like--
But--
I'm confused by what she said.
Could you please hold? Could you hold for a moment? Town Council, please.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The town meeting does not have the control over allocation of ARPA funds. That rests in the executive. So, yeah, town meeting can vote however it votes, but the proposed motion may not be legally effective.
We voted it in in May. As part of the May's town meeting, we voted it in on this body. We voted in to use that ARPA fund money as part of the budget.
As part of the general budget, you authorize the Select Board--
And just to add, Mr. Moderator, the Select Board prior to town meeting voted to appropriate the use of ARPA funds for fiscal year 2025 budget source. The Select Board has not taken that action to appropriate those funds for this particular purpose.
Is there any further discussion? Please come to the mic, state your name, address, and your summer home.
You were not that funny in class. I had him as a student years ago. He's a good student, though. I'm just totally confused, because I heard in your motion-- Oh, I don't need a mic. I never needed a mic. I know, a lot of people tell me to shut up, but that's okay. I'm confused. I heard the word tax, tax revenue, the tax funds. I thought the only time we could vote on tax revenues was at the annual town meeting. So, I'm confused by--I'm confused by where that--in your, in your motion. And I guess the other thing, you're talking about this fund. Can you explain in layman's terms or easy terms what fund we'd be taking this money out of? Because I'm confused about that, too.
Thank you.
18 Blueberry Lane, Rutland.
So, it's my understanding that the proposed amendment looks to reduce the amount of revenues from the tax levy? Yeah, sure. I could do that. It's my understanding that the proposed amendment would look to reduce the amount of revenue from the tax levy and utilize the American Rescue Plan, ARPA funds, as a revenue source. Again, my comment would be, we're looking to utilize sustainable funding sources for our budget and not one-time funding sources. That was one of the feedback that I received from Finance Committee and Select Board during the fiscal year 2025 budget preparation process, was, "We're using way too much one-time funding sources." This revised budget proposal uses less one-time funding sources.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Is there any other discussion on the amendment? So, at this time, you're going to take your clickers, and I apologize for not giving us a practice earlier. You can say this will be our practice, and hopefully we get it right. So, we're going to vote on the amendment only. With this lovely lady just read, we're voting--green is yes, red is no. All those in favor, please vote--all those in favor, please vote green. All those opposed, please vote red. At this time, please. And we're still looking for clicker 131. Well, I have a screen up here in front of me, so it says--long as numbers are still coming in, we'll wait. Have all those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Motion is defeated. There are 52 noes, 46 yeses. So, the amendment goes down. We'll go back to general discussion on Article 1. Is there any discussion on Article 1?
Michelle Van Reet, 230 Charnock Hill Road. It kind of pains me to see that we're using ARPA funds to pay our internet bill, because ARPA funds, I believe, were from the pandemic, and that should have already been in our budget from before. I think we really need to think hard about what we need and fund our budget with an override that's going to fully fund whatever we need for these recurring expenses and not plan on rainy day funds to fill them. So, that's my comment.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? So, at this time, we're going to vote on Article 1, as it was previously made a motion. All those in favor of Article 1, please use your green button to do yes. All those opposed, please use the red button. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. 60--on yeses was 61, 38 noes. Motion carries on Article 1. Moving on to Article 2, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $80,000 from receipts reserved for appropriation for the sale of real estate in ordinance with GL Section 44, Subsection 63, for the purpose of funding a municipal service facility, town hall, and senior center, master plan, preliminary design, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 2 as printed in the warrants.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made, second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there--at this time, I'll have Austin give a short presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Speaking about Article 2, crucial step forward toward planning the future of our town's municipal facilities. Specifically, we're asking for your support in funding a master plan and preliminary design for town hall and senior center. This is a project that not only addresses longstanding challenges that exist with the facilities, but also we have the groundwork for facilities that meet the needs of the community today and into the future. So, we want to start by providing briefly, just in context of our current facilities. So, the town hall, also known as community hall, was built in the mid to late 1930s and began serving as town office space, also, I believe, library space, in 1939. It's--while it's served us well over the years, the building, as many of you are familiar with, is starting to show its age and age and requires significant maintenance to remain functional. The annex, also known as the library building, was built in 1971 as a public library and was later converted to town office space in the early 2000s. Again, another facility that is no longer meeting the operational demands of town departments and the community. The community and senior center, also known as the--was once the Naquad Baptist Church, purchased by the town in 1995, faces similar challenges, requiring substantial structural repairs, plenty of electrical upgrades, interior renovations, and improvements to the parking lot. In 2021, a facilities management study was conducted, estimating approximately $22.5 million would be needed to maintain and repair all of our town facilities across the organization over the next decade. This alone included $7.5 million for the town hall and annex and approximately $800,000 for the senior center. These estimates are already significant, and with inflation factored in, the cost of these repairs, we're predicting potentially reaching around $10 million for the town hall and senior center alone. So, to address these challenges, the Select Board authorized the use of ARPA funds last year to complete a space needs analysis and feasibility study for the town hall, community senior center, and regional dispatch center. It was a several-month-long process identifying specific programming needs of town departments in the community, proposed potential layouts for updated facilities, and provided very high-level initial cost estimates. The work has given, I think, a clear understanding to the community about the challenges and opportunities ahead with existing facilities. So, the master plan and preliminary design we're proposing tonight builds on that foundation. This is a multi-step process. As you can see on the chart above, we're at step two of a very long process. The point is, we need to do proper planning to be able to get to the facilities' needs that the community deserves. Our goal is to ensure that we have a comprehensive and actionable plan to guide us forward. And the project has four primary objectives. First, developing a comprehensive site plan, including feasibility, zoning requirements, environmental conditions, and any infrastructure associated with the project. The plan also includes phased construction strategies, third-party cost estimates, and visual renderings to help make informed decisions through the design and construction phase. Second, we're also committed to preserving the historic character of the communities, especially community hall, while also ensuring operational needs. This also includes incorporating sustainable design elements and compliance with modern building codes. Third, we need to modernize and expand our facilities to meet the current and future community needs that have been identified through extensive public feedback and comments that I've received just in my short time here already. This means upgrades to utilities, improving accessibility, enhancing energy efficiency of the buildings, and creating flexible spaces that can adapt to changing demands of the community. Finally, this plan and preliminary design allows us to get a better idea of costs and manage those and schedule those effectively by engaging third-party experts who can provide detailed estimates and realistic timelines for the project. So, the $80,000 from receipts reserved for appropriation from the served real estate, AKA the HEITZ money, is to fund the master plan and preliminary design, helping us move forward to avoid piecemeal repairs and escalating costs while ensuring that the facilities meet the needs of the residents for years to come. We're trying to take a step forward to be efficient and community-centered solution for the town hall and senior center. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on this article?
I don't know if you want me on the mic. Jean Sigliano, 27, 625. I applaud the idea of having a plan. However, this plan is for two buildings. It's for a senior center and the town hall, community hall. It doesn't look at the entire town and all the buildings and how they might change uses. So, we're spending $80,000, and there's, there's no part in the--I saw the presentation that was made to the Select Board. There's no part that says, "What are we going to do with the existing community center after we build a new senior center where the annex is?" So, the plan is to take down the annex and build a senior center smaller than the So the plan is to take down the Annex and build a senior center smaller than the community center. So the activity room right now in the community center is almost 2,500 square feet. That room is filled during exercise classes. In the new plan, that we paid $33,000 for, they said we only need 1,500 feet. The café shrinks in size, many of the rooms shrink in size, and the kitchen is eliminated. The café shrinks in size. These are things we need, and somehow, that company that we spent all that money on did not glean this information from what is available. We need a comprehensive look at all town buildings and properties. I get that something was done before, but we have to think, okay, if we're putting the senior center up in town, where is everyone going to park? We don't have enough parking where it is now. We have 100 acres at Glenwood. I went, and I went on partial access, the town owns more than 15 parcels in the town. One of them is 100 acres at Glenwood. Why aren't we maybe thinking about that and how to use all of it and move things around? Maybe we should be putting the senior center, the soccer field that's at the community center, at Glenwood. And then maybe we can build a new senior center where it connects to the community center on the soccer field, and then possibly knock down the old building, if that's the plan. But we don't know what the plan is. The plan is to spend $80,000 to build a senior center that's too small, double the size of the Town Hall, and the parking lot. Now you're going to have more need for parking and nowhere to put it. It just seems like this is piecemeal, like we should be looking at all our properties and have an overall master plan of what's going to happen 10, 20 years down the line, and then study individual buildings. Right now, we don't have that. Thank you.
So, Mr. Moderator, I definitely appreciate the sentiment, and I agree with most of the comments, but I want to emphasize that what you're asking tonight, what we're asking tonight does not mean that what you see in the feasibility study will be the Town Hall or the Senior Center. The point is, we have a long way to go. This master plan and preliminary design then goes to the community. There will be building committees that are formed for a Town Hall and Senior Center complex. Then we have to go back to the community, back to town meeting, back to town ballots, to ask for additional design money to actually fully design the building. This is preliminary design. This will get you concepts. This will take a look at the space needs analysis and get feedback from the community about, to your point, I don't disagree with you, but I think what was proposed from the engineering company probably doesn't have enough activity space for the senior center. But that's for the community to decide. And that's why we need to do a master plan and go through the design phase to actually design a senior center. If we were going to design this building as drafted in the feasibility study, we'd be asking for a lot more than $80,000. $80,000 does not design a facility. This is a master plan and preliminary design to advance. This is phase two of a multi-phase process for building a municipal facility. And to your point about the kitchen and some of the details that I think are missing, you also don't see bathroom stalls, you also don't see doors, you also don't see mechanical equipment. A space needs analysis and feasibility study is very high-level. It takes a look at some of the program requirements for town departments and provides recommended square footage. That was what was recommended from the consultant. I think the community is going to disagree with that. But that's the community's decision, and that's why we're asking to advance this tonight, to put it in your hands and a future building committee's hands, to actually finally decide what a Town Hall and what a Senior Center project looks like. And to your question or your comments about looking at all the town buildings, you know, I think that's a good future project to look at the use of all buildings, but this is essentially a design or construction request, right? So we're looking to advance that process. We can do a master plan for all of our buildings. We had a facilities management study done a couple of years ago that looked at essentially getting all the buildings into a state of good repair, but that's not what we're asking tonight. We're looking at two exclusive buildings, the use and future incorporation for potentially a renovated building and new building.
Is there?
Just one comment. The location of the senior center, I don't disagree. I think it was included in that site plan to show scale, but there's plenty of other spaces in town to put a senior center. But again, that's going to be the community's decision about where you're going to put a senior center, or a Town Hall.
Mike, just talk loud.
Jonathan Miller, 27, Brunel Drive. I'm also the president of Rutland Little League. I believe at a previous town meeting, we appropriated $30,000 for a study on the senior center and the use of that. Is that correct?
Correct.
What happens to that $30,000?
Still sitting on the books, but I look to use ARPA funds and non-tax levy funds for these projects. So the receipts reserved for appropriation was from sale of real estate. We cannot use that for any other purpose than land acquisition or costs associated with debt service over five years, which a design or construction would be.
So what happens to $30,000 we already did?
So when this project's closed out, the town accountant can close out the article and it falls back to free cash, or it can be re-appropriated for another purpose.
So if we fall back to free cash, why not reduce this by $30,000 and use the money we've already allocated for it?
Because it's not closed at free cash yet. It's a way to the end of fiscal year to do that.
Right, but we don't need it to be free cash if we've already allocated it, correct?
Sure.
Okay. So, second, we just spent $90,000 a year ago on a new roof for the senior center, correct? A year and a half ago, two years ago? We spent $40,000 on a new commercial kitchen. So when we did all that, did we know that we were planning on getting rid of the current senior center?
No.
We didn't?
No. That was before this project was started.
Can you tell me why a municipal services facility project plan does not include recreation?
So there was a goal, I think, of the Select Board to take a look at the Town Hall and a senior center project. One question I think that was raised is what happens with the existing facility, with the current facility? You can make the argument that if you build a brand-new senior center somewhere, do you turn 53 kilometers over to recreation, especially with all the land area that's located behind? So, again, that's a community decision. That's not a decision that we make tonight. But I think that that's something for town meeting and potential voters to decide.
It doesn't take an awful lot to look and say, that is not a recreation center.
Nor is it a senior center.
More search for one than the other. You're not playing basketball or doing any sort of recreation inside the current senior So at the October 28th Board of Select meeting, you said that a new senior center was going to cost about $19.2 million, and $5.5 million for a senior center. Are we, have we, I mean, $19.2 million for a renovation of Town Hall seems a lot. I thought it was a historic building. You're telling me now that it's 1930 is when we built that? Why are we not considering a complete teardown?
Yeah, so again, community decision. So funding tonight goes to a building committee. The proposal, and one of the guidance that I received from the Select Board was try to maintain the existing facility. So that was a directive that we gave to the consulting engineering company, was to maintain the existing facility, gut and renovate. Obviously, if tonight advances and we go through this phase and the community and the building committee decides that it's more prudent use of funds to build a new facility, that's something that the community decides. But that needs to be decided through this next phase.
I'd like to make an amendment. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $80,000 from the receipts reserved for appropriation from the sale of real estate in accordance with General Law 44, Section 63, for the purpose of funding a municipal services facility to include Town Hall, senior center, and a recreation slash community center, master plan and preliminary design, or take any action thereto. I'm adding the words recreation and community center to that. Motion is made seconded. Any discussion on the amendment? Please come up to the.
And I understand the amendment. The project as proposed is looking to identify the requirements that, and the findings of the space needs assessment and feasibility study for the Town Hall and Senior Center. We do not have any information about the needs of recreation. We need to have a separate project to fully comprehensively study the needs of recreation. We don't have any data for what recreation needs. I would also argue, and just want to identify, that what was proposed in the Town Hall project actually allocates space for recreation office and our safe place program. The entire basement of a proposed addition before an after-school program has space utilized in the facility. But again, just want to say that this master plan and conceptual design wouldn't have nothing to confirm for recreation as you're requesting.
Lou, Lou, hold on a second. Can I just jump right back in? I defer to you, and then I'll jump back in.
At one time, in the late 90s and early 2000s, when I had the privilege of serving on the Select Board, Doug Bridge, it was both, the building over here was both recreation and citydome, and that Doug remembers, we had always problems going back and forth between the two ends. Anyway, to you, I'd like to ask a gentleman on your question to you. When you're talking about recreation, feasibility study, recreation, what are you talking about? An actual building with, what, gymnasiums in it, swimming pool, that kind of stuff?
I'm not saying a swimming pool, but some sort of gymnasium space, a recreation space.
Okay. So.
Louie, we're getting closer to the mic because we've got to be somewhat, we don't want to use the mic, be four feet away.
So I guess my question is, gymnasium here, gymnasium at the middle school, and believe me, I'm all for recreation. I was president of the Little League at one time, too, so I know what you're talking about, okay? And Naquad, gymnasium. So to me, it would just seem to be repetitious. My understanding is that kids can use these facilities. I know middle school kids are allowed to go in there under supervision. So wouldn't it be repetitious? I can understand maybe creating some new fields, and we do have land for that, you know, the 100 acres here, we could put up a couple of fields. But our hospital, there's land there for the fields. But is that what you see, building a whole structure, looking into building a structure with the gymnasium and all of that stuff? Is that what you're?
So, the reality is, is that the gymnasiums we have in town at the schools are in use 100% of the time during fall, winter, and spring. They are not available for anybody, they are not available for anybody in town to use. They're constantly being rented out by various leagues. The reality is, people in this town spend well over $100,000 a year paying for batting cages and gym space in other towns that are not in Rutland. And if that money was staying here, it would be better served, but we're all spending money every place else. I drive to Oxford twice a week for practices. In terms of Austin saying that this wasn't meant to be a recreation space, with all due respect, a closet in Town Hall is not recreation space. The rec department serves over 1,300 individual people every year. They waitlist another 500 people every year. We need more space for recreation to run their programs. We budget nothing in town for recreation. The fields, the only thing the town does for the fields is they mow them. The reality is, the private leagues pay for the upkeep of those fields. And so we're asking that we finally start allocating resources to recreation instead of just ignoring it and putting them back in the closet in a new Town Hall.
Get within six feet, Darren. Get within six feet of the mic so we can have a recording of your voice.
I think one recommendation that we spend some of this ARPA money on a PA system. Hear what's going on. This is, this is stuff. If we're going to vote his amendment, then we should vote down the article. We don't have enough money, guys. I agree 100% with what he's saying, but we don't have enough money in the study that Austin got and worked through that unfortunately, we all, not unfortunately, we all heard the whole story. While I agree with what you're saying, if we only have money to do the two buildings. If you want to do this motion, I'll support you, but I am going to do my best to vote down the article because 80 grand isn't going to do all three. And we don't, there's plenty of money up there if you follow along up at Roland Heights to do exactly what you want to do. But this 80 grand is for these two buildings. I'll work with you to get your recreation stuff, but this is not the time to do that because we've already got the money earmarked for two buildings. And I agree with you, but 80, it's not going to be enough money. It's wasting money.
Can I make one question here? And you all can tell me whether this is possible. We've already allocated $30,000 to the senior center. Why can't we take that 30 and the 80 and make one 10 to do what we want to do? The 30,000 is already allocated.
I'm not disagreeing.
No, I'm not arguing. I'm not fighting.
I think it's a great idea, but first and foremost, we need to do a space needs and feasibility study. So I think where you're going is, a great idea would be to tell the Select Board at future town meeting to reappropriate the 30,000 that was previously for a senior center and do it for a recreational facility. Do it right. You need to do a space needs analysis and feasibility study first before we go to the master plan and start talking about design.
I would bet that if you ask our rec department if they have a space needs analysis, they'd be able to tell you exactly what they need right now.
And I'm going to say one last thing. I don't think $30,000 is enough. We've got a pile of money up there at Roland Heights. Let's look at what we really need to do and help her out with recreation, and don't wait, don't be short-sighted on the 30. Let's do it right. I question if 80 was enough. Let's make sure that we do it right because we've got money up there, huge.
Are we talking about the amendment?
Yes. It's definitely related. Ludwig Hammer, 1 Olivia. So aside from the very good points that were made regarding adding the recreation, it does also sounds like we don't really have a needs that the town agrees with what was originally the conceptual analysis for the new Town Hall and facility up on Glenwood down here. So that's what's confusing to me. Now we're going to spend money going some steps down the line of detail, and it doesn't really seem like we're on board with what that's going to be. So are we just throwing out the 80? Because we're not going to want to pay for what that actually is designing. And what was the process like to listen to what we were saying? Maybe there was hearings and we missed them?
Yes, so the feedback for the space needs analysis and feasibility study incorporated looking at existing facilities, interviewing town staff, town departments, and matching those up against industry-known best practices for similar facilities recently constructed, and aligning that with program needs and allocating space requirements. And again, to the point of not agreeing with what has been identified, again, that's why we have to go through the process for the community to decide. So for example, they say the Town Hall's too big, scale it back. They say the senior center's too small. This is sort of in an interim period where we have the ability to really shape what the facility looks like, which is not done through a space needs analysis or feasibility study. We have to go through the next step to actually get some sort of design concepts. And again, third-party cost estimates to really truly have a better idea to come back to town meeting and what that will cost. Ultimately, it's going to be your decision about what the facility looks like and how much you want to spend on it.
Karen Giuliano, 10 Village Way. My only concern is, we did $30,000 on the feasibility study, and I don't know who the heck they talked to to get that needs assessment done, because all they had to do was look at the present building, and it has to be at least the same size. That feasibility study went from $7,000 to $4,000. So if we're going to pay $80,000 more to do something, and that's what everybody agrees to, that's fine. But I hope they do it right the next time and ask the individual groups, you know, the buildings they're in, whether that space is feasible or not. Because we can't come back with another different buildings having shortages of space and no kitchen. We prepare meals there, not to have a kitchen. It has a pantry, but we don't have a kitchen. So if that kind of money is going to be spent, it needs to be spent, and then each group that needs to be covered, the Town Hall, make sure the space is adequate when that feasibility study is presented, or else it's useless and another $80,000 going down the tubes.
So just one point, I agree with a lot of the points that have been made, but I So just one point, I agree with a lot of the points that have been made, but Karina Frohok, 12 Davis Street, I'm also the Recreation Director. The point that I wanted to make that I've been trying to advocate for since I've been here, so for nine and a half years, is that recreation is for everybody. So, you know, Jonathan mentioned 1,300 people that we serve. That's actually only 1,300 people under 18. We actually have about 4,000 recreation users, and that is from birth through all ages. So the fact that we want to build, you know, in silos and keep, have a building for seniors and a building for recreation doesn't make a lot of sense to me because to me, there's so much overlap in opportunities for programming and very little overlap as far as scheduling. Your recreation programs happen, you know, in the afternoon and evening. Your senior programs happen more towards the day. Things that happen in the evening for seniors could be exercise classes, which we're no longer allowed to do at the senior center. We're also no longer able to do holiday events like cookie decorating, wreath making for all ages, gingerbread house making, Easter egg hunt, things like that. So to say that we need a separate recreation center and senior center just seems wasteful to me. I started my professional career working for the YMCA where my state-of-the-art after-school program at 601 PM turned into something else for somebody else. There was no wasted space. It was always sharing, it was always working together. So if we're going to spend all this money on studies and buildings and improving the town, then let's work together because recreation is for everybody, not just kids.
Is there area of discussion on the amendment?
Yes. I want to vote for everything.
Please, name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Joan Mahoney, and I live at 14 Lizzie Lane in Rutland. And I think everybody is right. Having raised two kids in this town, I know how important recreation is. I volunteered for every recreational league there was, and I've moved on now, and you can't notice the color of my hair so much, but I'm at the senior center now. I know that it's a great idea to combine seniors and recreation, or at least it sounds like that, but it isn't. For those of you who remember, as Lou talked about, the time when they were combined, it was very unhappy for both groups. And one of the reasons it was very unhappy for both groups is because the needs of the kids, kids are ambutious. Kids need to get their energy out. Kids need a place they can exercise. And they're loud, and they cause a lot of ruckus, and they also cause some damage. And seniors don't need any of those things. They need quiet, and they need order, and they need places where their brains can, you know, kind of figure out what's going on all the time. Our needs aren't just during the day. We would like a place where we could do some things in the evening as well. We would like a memory care center. There's an awful lot of our citizens here in town who are facing some challenges with memory care. And we would love to have a place where we could have that taken care of, and we would love to be able to expand our hours, to have a director and a co-director who could work longer than they are allowed to work right now. So I think that this amendment to have a study for recreation is a wonderful amendment, all right? But I think it's going to not work with this particular proposal. I think they need to go out, I think you need to go out, and you need to find some money to do your recreation. I'm not sure how you're going to do that. I really believe that we should pass this the way it is. Town Hall, you all know, really needs a lot of work. The senior center needs a lot of work, or perhaps a new building. By putting the amendment on this or voting this down, we are pushing all of that back, and we are not advancing recreation. So I'm asking that you consider not approving the amendment. I'm asking that you consider putting this forward the way that it is so we can take care of business and supporting recreation when their time comes. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the amendment?
As a selectman or as a resident? I think as a select member. One of our goals and objectives, Leah Whitman, 208 East County Road, Select Board also. One of our goals and objectives for Select Board this year was this focusing on the municipal needs of the community. We understand that there's, and also recreation. We had a long conversation about recreation, and that hasn't fallen by the wayside. The money that was allocated was for the senior center and Town Hall. We cannot continue, the board agreed, could not continue to stay all or nothing. We need to be able to do what we can, and this was funding that was there. We heard a few years ago that the senior center project was an important one when the funding was allocated for the senior center study. That's part of the reason that that was included in this. That also then would open up the space on Glenwood Road, whether it's maintaining that building as it is, or moving it, or not moving it, but moving recreation there, or utilizing the space for a senior center. It opens up some space. We understand the need for recreation, and the board is committed to that as well. Right now, the funding that we have is for these two projects to move forward, and that's what we're asking, to move something forward and then continue the other pieces as well. We're also exploring public-private partnerships for the recreation piece to do a bigger facility and accessibility for recreation entirety and not solely for the kids or a specific age group.
Is there any discussion on the amendment?
I need to introduce myself again. I'd just like to respond to Leah on this. I've been the president of Ronald Little League for, this is my eighth year. I've been on board for 12. There have been no fewer than a half a dozen conversations with the Select Board in those 12 years about needing more recreation space, convening giant meetings, talking about what we need to do, and all it is is talk. It's been, it's not all, the board turns over. But the reality is, we keep talking about it. It's been a dozen years. My kid's getting ready to go to college, and we started this conversation when he was four. And so the reality is, we keep talking about we need it. Recreation has been homeless for seven years. Seven years! The community center got changed over to the senior center seven years ago, and I'm not knocking it. I'm just saying that we've had no space for recreation for that many years now. And at what point do we say recreation is the priority? Because they don't have a home. I get we need better space for senior center. I understand that. But we keep kicking the can down the road, and we keep putting recreation as last. At some point, it's got to jump up.
Mike Pantos, 32 Palmigasse Road, motion to call the question.
A motion's been made to call the question and second it. All those in favor of moving the questions, please, you want to use the clicker or not?
No.
So we'll use a question, we'll use the clicker to move the question. It just ends debate and takes the immediate motion on the amendment, is what it's going to do. Ben is ready, ready to do it. All those in favor of moving the question, please use your green button. All those opposed, please use your red button.
Move the question.
This is going to be two-thirds.
It's just shut debate off on the amendment.
That's all it is. We can have discussion on the original motion. This has to be two-thirds as well. All those voted who wish. The number's still going up. I declare the ballot box closed. There are 87 yeses, 16 noes. It passed two-thirds favorable to move the question. So at this time, we'll move the question on the amendment only. That's what Mr. Miller had just stated, by paraphrasing, adding recreation to it. All those in favor of adding...
Is there any discussion on that?
No. That's, we just moved the question to end all debate.
I thought that was the amendment.
It is. We're voting on the, only the amendment.
Oh, okay.
So we're voting on just the amendment, more or less to add recreation to the study, to the original article of it. This is a majority vote on this alone, and all those in favor, please use your green button for the amendment. All those opposed, please use your red button. You ready? I shouldn't ask now, absolutely.
You can cancel it.
All those voted who wish. I declare the ballot box closed. The motion is defeated. 59 noes, 37 yeses. So what that means is the amendment went down. So now we can discuss the article that's in front of us without the amendment there.
Ludwig Haber, One Olivia. The question I have, maybe somebody from Select Board can talk to this, is how were the senior center needs and the municipal needs determined? I think the municipal needs, you probably went through a thorough process. It doesn't sound like the senior center went far enough or talked to the right people. Because I'm really worried we're going to spend $80,000 designing something, bringing something down the line that's not going to serve even those needs, never mind recreation.
Nancy Nichols, 5 Lizzie Lane. I'm also the director of the senior center. I apologize because I came in late. I had something else very important to do.
Turn around that way?
Don't yell. I don't want to scream. Well, I kind of want to address them, too. So where should I speak from? Anyway. If anybody can't hear me, just let me know. Again, I apologize for coming in late to this discussion, but one thing I'm concerned about is before COVID, there was, on the floor, and it was quite a debate, whether to get a $35,000 feasibility study for the senior center. It went back and forth for quite a long time. People said, no, why don't we just renovate? No, and it was decided to do this study. A committee was formed, including the fire chief, the police chief, and a group of seniors and myself on this committee and the town administrator at the time, to go forward, go to like towns and see what was going on, what are the needs of the senior center. That kind of just fell apart because COVID hit. It was never brought back. My concern with this is, and I didn't really know about this until today, because a lot of seniors have come into the senior center this week saying, what are they going to do? We've heard that we're going to be moved to the annex. And I said, well, wait a minute, wait a minute. I know there's going to be a study done, but what do you mean move to the annex? They're going to move us to the annex. I said, I don't, I would not be afraid of anything like that because then you displaced the people in the annex. Then I learned at the board meeting today that, no, there was this presentation that came about, and it's just the whole study, and what would happen is the new senior center would be on the site of the annex, which is okay, but I don't feel as though that $35,000, if that was part of the money spent, was spent on an actual study that is going to give us a true picture of what is needed. It is half the size of the current senior center, which is already too small. We have so many activities that we have built up there. We have exercise every day, we have other programming, there's not enough parking, there's not enough space, there's not enough staff. So I don't think whatever was spent on this so far, time-wise, is not valid. It doesn't have enough room for what we need. The senior population is growing, and I am also in favor of recreation. We should have another site. There are towns that are building, you know, places right next to each other. You have to accommodate all ages, but they're two different issues. But I don't think this piece, what you guys have done so far is represented, representational of the, of what we need for a senior center. It's not. It's half the size. And there's no kitchen. I don't know where that came from. There is no kitchen in this conceptual picture of a senior center, which is really, even at the very basics, the Meals on Wheels program needs a kitchen. The events that we hold need kitchens. We had a craft fair this weekend, you know, over 500 people came through that door of all ages. It was a community event. And I'm hearing constantly, it's a community center, you know, a community center is a word. I don't care what anybody calls it. The pancake breakfast that is held by the senior center, the craft fair, the festival of trees that takes place at the library are three huge community events that draw hundreds of people. And the seniors seem to get knocked down, and I'm not up here just for seniors, but you know what? All three of those events are primarily run by the seniors in this town. I don't think anybody feels support. I think, you know, I get up here all the time until I asked Anita to please sit me outside. But there's no teamwork in this town anymore. There needs to be a lot done. The town is growing. We need recreation. We need a senior center. We don't need to fight over $80,000, which isn't going to really do much anyway, to do the right thing. We need to sit back, take a couple steps back, in my opinion, and figure out what we're going to do as a whole, propose something that makes sense for everybody, and see. If you get a strong yes, or, you know, if you get a yes or a strong maybe that says we can do all these things, then go forward and ask people if they'll pay for a study. But to pay for a study first for things that we're not even sure of what we need. I mean, but what's in here as a senior center is not representative of what a senior center should be. Again, no kitchen, half the size of what's there, that's only going to make our problems worse. We can't even share the building and do what we need to do. If we wanted to include everybody, and then we're going to work with something half the size? It seems to me like the bottom floor of what's presented in the town offices is some kind of facility to rent, which is also something to look at. If you want a facility where you can rent the space out and make money, then let's build one. You've got to build it the right way, and you've got to have the plans the right way. So anyways, that's my comment.
Hi, Trista Santillo, 124 Tryna Kill Road. So it seems like, I'm not a senior, but it seems like the vibe in the room is that some people feel really upset about what was, what was the result of that first amount of money that came back to what the person just spoke about, and other people have spoke about, about how like kitchens too small, like space is too small, blah, blah, blah. So my question is, the $80,000, are you using, is the town's plan to use the same firm that they used for the first part to go forward? Yes or no?
No.
Excellent. Okay, there everyone is your answer. They're not going to use the same firm, which means this $80,000 is now kind of something, could be something better or different. And also, I want to direct everyone's attention to what that actually says. It says, spend this money for the purpose of funding a municipal services facility, master plan, and preliminary design. It does not say we're going to build this whole new place and it's going to be terrible. It just says, master plan and preliminary design. It's just a study. And it probably just means, I'm guessing here, but we're going to like pay some smart person to like write up something. And no, it does not mean at all they're going to come up with this thing that automatically Rutland's going to implement. The community is going to have time to evaluate and see if this is going to work or not. And when we get to that point, I encourage everyone who's invested in these buildings to go to the meetings and make your voices known at that point. This meeting is not that meeting. This meeting is, we're going to continue with this strategy or whatever we're doing. We're using some other firm, not this like idiot place that everybody didn't like the results of. And it's simply right now a master plan and design, not the grand job. That's it.
Any other comments?
Jen Ledger, Joanna Drive. I'm going to propose an amendment, and we'll see how it goes. I understand a lot of the discussion and concern about what's going on with the senior center. I want to acknowledge that. If people feel that there has not been enough preparation work or research gone into it, I want to acknowledge that. So I'm going to propose an amendment for Article 2 to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $65,000 from receipts reserved for appropriation from the sale of real estate in accordance with GL Chapter 44, Section 63, for the purpose of funding a municipal services facility specific for Town Hall, master plan, and preliminary design, excuse me, or take any action in relation thereto. And I'm proposing that, again, just because if we want to leave the senior center, to have more research, I understand that, but we are in a critical space need for our municipal departments, and I don't want that to fall by the wayside if we feel that the senior center is not in the right place to participate in this study.
Does this amendment have a second? It'll second Mr. Canaccioli. Is there any discussion on this amendment?
Natalie Morrison, 15 Brunel Drive. I'm just curious whether it's the 65 or the 80. Could the ARPA funds be used, the unallocated ARPA funds be used for this 65 or 80, $80,000 study?
Yes, just need to go to the select board for them to approve use of the ARPA funds for that project.
Okay. My, the reason I'm asking that is it seems like the Rutland Heights money is still going to be there, that we could use for something else, whereas if the ARPA funds need to be used by the end of the year, maybe that would be a good use of those funds to use as one time, and that way we're not using recurring funds, or recurring expenditures with the ARPA funds.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment?
I'd just like clarification on where $65,000 came from. How did you come up with that number?
Don't use the mic, just talk closely.
I think between, if, from our earlier meetings, Austin, please correct me if I'm wrong, there was certain amounts allocated for the town hall versus the senior center for, for what was inclusive of this study. So just to give a little bit of a buffer, I think the senior center was 20,000. Does that sound roughly right? But just to give a little bit of a buffer, taking just 15 off, and that's where I got the 65 from.
If it's on the amendment, please.
I don't believe that the senior center should be excluded from this and just town hall. So lowering the amount to 65,000 and excluding the senior center to kind of go off and find its own thing at some point in time, isn't the answer to this. I think that the speaker who is up, thank you very much for the amendment, but I think the speaker who was up before said it quite succinctly. This is just the beginning. There's no guarantee the town hall is going to be town hall. There's no guarantee the senior center is going to be where the senior center is. We need to start the process. By delaying all this, we're not doing ourselves any favor. Everything gets more expensive every year. Let's start the process. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment?
Ludwig Haber, one Olivia. I still haven't heard from you guys where the listening happened for the senior center, and what kind of listening will happen at the start of this process. If you're going to start a design, you need specifications. And it doesn't sound like those specifications are in place, so don't design yet. So that's, that's my question. What kind of listening has gone on? Because it sounds like it's not right. So don't start designing. So how, what's, what in that $80,000 will allow that process to happen, to where some of these excellent thoughts are incorporated into the senior center design?
Mr. Moderator, so for the purposes of advancing both of these projects, I'm sorry.
Step away from the mic. Just, just back up there, that's all.
So building committees will be formed by the select board for each of the facilities. Rep members of the community will be members of that, of those committees, and they will guide, they will be the advocates for both of these projects. So for example, with the senior center, there will be a senior center building committee with ex officio members of, members of the council on aging, the senior center director, and any other staff deemed appropriate by the select board. That will guide the process, to be able to inform the next steps, right? So just to be clear, and I'm asking for, we're not getting to 25, 40, 60% design, preliminary concepts to inform what the final construction cost could look like, and then design from there. So again, we'll have to go back to town meeting to actually seek appropriation for design money. This is the master plan and preliminary design, just so you can see, you know, schematic models, if you will, of both of the facilities, and to confirm or reject, which it sounds like in this case will be the case for the senior center, the space needs analysis program, modify that, and come up with what the community and the building committee has decided for senior center and town hall.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Does everyone understand what we're voting on? We're voting on what Ms. Ledger had just stated about $65,000 is the amendment we're voting on. What's that, Mr. Nola?
It's only the town hall building. So it's a reduction in cost and only town hall.
Are we ready, Benjamin? All those ready to vote? If you're in favor of the amendment, use your green button. If you're opposed to the amendment, use your red button, please. All those voted who wish. I declare the ballot box closed. Motion is, the amendment is defeated at 65 noes, 33 yeses. Is there any discussion on the original motion?
Why are you asking, Chris, you drive? It's my understanding that the town is not in a great financial situation, that come the spring, we're going to be looking at override situation again. I guess I just, pardon my ignorance, don't understand why we're doing studies for buildings that we can't afford to build, even if we have a study. I, I guess I just don't get that.
Is there any other discussion?
Mike Pantos, 32 Palmagosa Road. Thank you to whoever created the pamphlet. I do want to say, this is phenomenal compared to past years. Uh, thank you to whoever made the pamphlet. It's phenomenal compared to past years. My question is, is, so is this one-time funds that's funding this? Or is this, is that correct? Okay, thank you. I don't see any reason we shouldn't pass this. I think this is a deal, as far as money's concerned, for those two buildings, and I would ask everyone to vote favorably. Thank you.
Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road. First of all, compliments to the presentation, you know, 50 years I'm in government meetings, we don't, we've never seen this before, so good job. But in regards to this, this particular article, you know, we, we have recreation who is obviously concerned and upset that they're not being included and taken care of in this. It just seems crystal clear to me that we need to step back and look at the whole town. Recreation, you know, seniors, the town facilities. It makes no sense to proceed with this just on the two items that have been initiated. And I guess I have, I have another basic question, and I don't even know whether it can be answered, but if I were looking to be, to build a new house, I would say to my, my wife and I would sit down and say, okay, our budget for a new house is whatever it is, half a million dollars, and, and the house is going to be 2,500 square feet, two garages, so on and so forth. We would then sit down with a builder and say, okay, I want to build a house, and this is what I want. What's it going to cost? Estimate is it going to cost? And they come back and they say, three quarters of a million dollars. So my wife and I would then go home and say, we can either somehow figure out how to do this, or we can't do this. And here we are with what I, it appears to me to be a $24 million price tag, that, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but in the end, what's going to happen is, the people are going to have to decide what the impact of that $24 million is on their pocketbooks. So to me, even though, you know, this is just a concept, it would seem to make sense to be able to say to the townspeople, if you pass this 24, if, if we build this $24 million project, here's the impact to you. This is what's going to happen to your tax bill, or whatever it is. To not know that and spend this 80, you know, we'll spend the $80,000 and we get this beautiful, you know, it could look like 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue, everybody will love it. But if everybody then comes to vote on it and says, you know what, I can't afford that. What, what good did the $80,000 do? So I don't know whether there's an interim step that you could kind of get there or not, but again, kudos up there and.
Is there any other discussion on the original article, please? Please come within four feet of the mic, so they can hear you, please.
We didn't drag our feet when we built the fire station, and then years later, we put the police station on, and then we did this school, and then we did the library, and then we did the DPW building. This is a feasibility study. I mean, it, it doesn't cement this into a program, and we can put our input, and then the people of this town, who I hope will step up and do the right thing, will vote these projects in. But we're dragging our feet. We should have done this, at the end of, at the end of 2006, we did a quick study on a potential expanding the town hall. At the time, we knew we didn't have the money to go forward with that, so we stopped halfway through. My point is, let's get this thing done. And I support recreation, and I hope recreation comes back at the annual town meeting and puts their present in. And let's get it done. I mean, we can't drag our feet on these things. Let's get going. Come on.
Is there any other discussion on this article?
Mike Taverkas, five Stevens Way. I love a lot of the comments, but the basic article here is our two buildings. This is $80,000 to move forward in idea. We got a basic fund, these drawings that have been made is not what's going to happen. What's going to happen when this $80,000 is put forward is a concept put together for all of us to decide. It's our decision. These will come to public hearings. I agree, the senior center, I'm for recreation too. Senior center, the new, this, this designed here, this thing's missing. But that's not what reality is. That's not what is going to happen. Things like the kitchen, the size, we need to double the size in the senior center. What is in this drawing is not enough. But that has to come to us. So when they do this feasibility study, which is all they're going to do, is they're going to say, here's the best place for a recreation center. Here's what we think is the best for this. But it's going to come up to public hearings for us to decide. It's our choice. And hopefully, when that happens, if this passes, that we get the strain, the strong voices that we're getting here tonight, that not 25 people show up to the public hearings, but 500 show up. And when it comes to an annual meeting and it gets voted on, that we get that. That's what we need, and we need the voices. But now's the move forward. Let's move forward on this and to see and get and address these needs as they come about. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the original article? Within four feet of the mic, so we can hear it on the cable, please.
If we go forward with this, how are we selecting the firm that's going to do it and ensuring us it's not going to be the firm that came up with this poorly executed?
That question was already answered.
The answer was no, if, if it will be the same firm. So we have to follow general procurement, especially for building projects, so the town will have to issue, oh, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting. We have to follow general procurement for this, so we will have to do a request for qualifications process with all of the information that was provided in the space needs analysis, and essentially scope of work for qualified firms. And those firms have to have certain experience with town hall, senior center projects. And then there's actually the select board through designer selection process, will actually have to appoint a committee to evaluate those firms and provide a recommendation for the most advantageous firm to be able to conduct and execute this master plan, this project.
John Moody, 25 Wildbrook Drive. I've been in construction for 27 years. The $80,000 price tag, I guess my biggest issue is, with all the complaints that I'm hearing, I want to know who is responsible for hiring those people first, because I don't want them touching 80 grand to go after this. They obviously do not know how to pick it, and that's very frustrating, and that's one of the things that's holding this up.
Is there any other discussion on this article?
Carol Benoit, Turkey Hill Road. Turkey Hill Road, Carol Benoit. A point of clarification, we have an $80,000 price tag, which I watched a joint, FinCom and CE, CE were meeting, that said there was basically a contract and it would not exceed $80,000. How can we guarantee that it's not going to exceed $80,000? They wanted to give you more money, you said, no, we don't need any more money, and now you're saying it's not even out to RFP, so.
General part of procurement is I have to go out and essentially do price solicitations from qualified firms to see for this type of project, what the scope of work would look like. And that's unofficial, right? Because it's not, I'm not following the general procurement for that. But I need to be able to get a number to bring to town meeting. So the ballpark estimates were actually in the 70s. I needed to have a little bit of capacity, so my recommendation was $80,000 from the Heights mine.
But that sounded like you didn't need any more money. And so, I mean, I don't know. Never mind that. But I, the presentation online, there's three weaknesses stated, and one of them is the size, the traffic impact, and parking. Right there, I, I mean, I don't know, feasibility study was already done, as far as I know. That $30,000 was, was a feasibility study. This is taking it to the next step, which is we're evaluating this piece of property and this piece of property for the two buildings, and yet, the annex isn't going to work for the senior center, so I don't understand why we're even considering moving this forward. We, I don't, I don't know this part of municipality, but I don't know why we don't have a building committee already in place to start looking at the true master plan, as my colleague over here, my friend, has said. We need to look at the entire town. We're looking at public safety buildings. We're looking at dispatch. We're looking at all, the library, all of the buildings, and we don't have a comprehensive plan about the whole thing, and then prioritizing what needs to be done first. We can't do it all at once, but I think this $80,000 is just, you might as well open the door and let the money out. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? We are going to vote on the original article. We had two amendments, both of those amendments went down, so we're voting on the original article. All those in favor, please use your green button. All those opposed, please use your red button. All those voted who wish. I declare the ballot box closed. Motion is defeated, 66 noes, 37 yeses. Moving on to Article Three, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law Section, Classes 60, subsection 2, paragraph 2, allowing the abatement of certain uncollectible taxes after notification by the collector to the assessors or take any action in relation thereto? Is there a second to this? Motion made and seconded. Recommendation to the finance committee, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on Article Three.
Is there any discussion on Article Three? Is there any discussion on Article Three? Is there any discussion?
Sorry, I just wanted to point everyone to the explanation in the packet that's provided for the next articles, three, four, and five. These are just provisions per MGL that allows us to, to work through the process. So I just wanted to point that the explanation is in the packets.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those who, please use your green buttons favorably. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish. I declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries, 88 yeses, 10 noes. Moving on to Article Four, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law Section 40, subsection 42A dash 42F, and authorize the town to establish a lien on property for overdue and unpaid water service charges and commit such unpaid amount of property tax in, for said property or take any. of property tax in, for said property or take any action thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 4 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on Article 4.
Is there any discussion on Article 4? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. Only reason I'm standing away is not because of the mic, it's because of that, my new suntan. All those voted who wish, all those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries. 76 yeses, 14 no's. Moving on to Article 5, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law Section 83, subsection 16A-16F, and authorize the town to establish a lien on property for overdue and unpaid sewer service charges and commit such unpaid amounts to the property tax bill for the said property or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to approve Article 5 as printed in the warrant.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on Article 5.
Is there any discussion on Article 5? Is there any discussion on Article 5? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries. 66 yeses, 13 no's. Moving on to Article 6, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law subsection 90, excuse me, section 90, subsection 18B, authorize the Select Board to establish designated safety zones with a posted speed limit of 20 miles per hour on or at near any way in the town which is not a state highway, if there is the same as a state highway with the approval of the Department of Transportation or take any action in relation thereto?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 6 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on Article 6.
Is there any discussion on this article? All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. 60 yeses, 31 no's. Moving on to Article 7, to see if the town will vote to amend Articles 3 and 4 of the Town of Rutland zoning bylaws and add a new section, subsection 7A, use regulation tables to begin the Article 3 prior to Section 8, and by adding a new section, subsection 14C, dimensional regulations table to begin of Article Section 4 prior to Section 15, for as set forth in attached handout or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept, approve, rather, Article 7 as printed on the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Board.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Board recommends favorable action on Article 7.
Planning Board.
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board recommends favorable action on Article 7.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green button. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. This is a two-thirds vote as well. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries. 73 yeses, 20 no's. That is more than two-thirds, yes, favorable. Moving on to Article 8, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 3, Section 8B, home occupation of the Town of Rutland zoning bylaws by deleting the strike-through text. Am I supposed to read that or not? Okay, it says, all right. By deleting the and inserting the bold text as the follows. You want me to read that? I believe it's printed in front of you, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 8 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Financing.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on Article 8.
Planning Board.
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board recommends favorable action on Article 8.
Do we have any discussion? Just with two of you sitting together scares me. Yes, Mr. Canocchioli. Four feet from the mic, state your name and address, please.
Just a simple question to my old colleague from Wachusett. What's the purpose of this? As I understand it right now, why does the, why does the Planning Board want to get involved with a site plan approval? Has there been problems? Is there a lot of problems going on in town? It would seem to me that it would interfere with somebody who's trying to make a living,
We'll have the Town Planner answer that.
John Chauvin, Town Planner. Past practice of the Planning Board has been to have minor home occupations come before them informally to give them guidance and potentially impose reasonable conditions to protect the butters. However, that's not, that is not enumerated in the zoning bylaws, so my original language was to simply memorialize that in the zoning bylaws. However, Town Council directed us that that is not legally enforceable, that this is the better route to have them come for site plan review. Site plan review is not a denial mechanism. It's meant to protect the butters. It's meant to protect the actual person who's doing the home occupation, because one thing that I've noticed in 13 months here is that my office has a lack of documentation on these things. Having a decision and having a public hearing will allow my office and the Building Department to enforce any complaint that may come in if minor home occupation starts creating a negative impact on an abutter, whether it be noise, dust, odor, what have you. So the only thing that changes from the current practice to this is a public hearing. That's it. It's not taking anyone right, anyone's rights away, because the Planning Board's looking out for the rights of the property owner, who has the right to do the minor home occupation, but also protecting the butters as well.
No, Big Brother's not getting involved.
No, this is not Big Brother. This is, this is documentation that will actually protect everybody.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none. We will now have a vote. All those in favor, use your green buttons. All those opposed, use your red buttons. This is a two-thirds vote as well, folks. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Did it pass?
No.
Say.
It will be red branded if it was available.
All right, good. Somebody, some of these other lawyers have different formulas than I have, so... 66 yes, 25 no's. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 9, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 7, special permits and subsection 40, rules and regulations of the Town of Rutland zoning bylaws by deleting the and inserting the bold text as the follows. I will not read that as printed in front of you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 9 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on Article 9.
Planning Board, recommendation, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board recommends favorable action on Article 9.
Is there a discussion on this particular article? Is there a discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. We will now vote. Green buttons, yes. Red buttons, no. This is also a two-thirds All those that voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Yes, 74, 16 no. Motion carries. Two-thirds or greater. Moving on to Article 10, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 12, the Marijuana Establishment, subsection 89, restrictions and provisions of the Town of Rutland zoning bylaws by deleting and inserting the bold text as the follows. Number 1, subsection 89-C, the number of special permits for retail L M E S shall be limited to 2, which number is equal to or more than 20% of the number of liquor license issued within the town for retail sales of alcohol beverage not to be drunk on premises where sold under MGL Section 138, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 10 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on Article 10.
Planning Board, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board recommends favorable action on Article 10.
Is there any discussion on this particular article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. So... There are 60 yeses, but there are 34 no's. That does not cover the two-thirds majority, so it has failed. Article 10 has failed. Moving on to Article 11, we, the undersigned petition of the Rutland Board of Selectmen to place the following article on the warrant to the annual town meeting scheduled for Thursday, November 21st, 2024. I need to read more than I'm okay with just that, right? So I have a motion? So I assume normally being a citizen petition, the citizen would get up and make the motion, correct?
Yes.
So if I have no motion on the floor, I have nothing to work with. Is that correct?
No motion. There's no motion to act on. If my, Mr. Moderator, if I may, it might be recommended, what the moderator may suggest and consider asking for a motion to definitely vote on the record to make that clear that no action was taken.
I would need somebody to do that, or can I? I can't make a motion?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. You might invite the Chair of the Select Board to make that motion, just as a procedural motion, so that the record is clear that no action was taken.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Article 11 citizen's petition is moved, suspended indefinitely. Is that the correct language?
You would move to indefinitely postpone the article.
I would, I moved indefinitely postpone Article 11, the citizen's petition.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance Board.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends no action on Article 11.
Is there any discussion on this particular article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those pleased in favor of the motion that was made, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons.
Is this on the article?
This is on the, the motion that the Selectmen just made. Can you state it louder, please? More or less, no action.
Postponing it indefinitely, so no action.
We haven't voted yet. I called for the vote, so...
A motion to indefinitely postpone is not amendable.
It's not amendable. I'm sorry. Do we understand what we're voting on?
No.
It's $100 a minute for him to talk, but... I believe it's just a formality is what they're doing for what they're doing, to take no particular action on this, but they used other words for it. Can you, can you explain the intent of...
Through you, Mr. Moderator. A motion to indefinitely postpone the article basically says, a yes vote on that motion is, we are taking no action. A no vote would defeat that motion, and the article would remain open. A yes vote closes the article.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, use your green buttons. All those opposed, use your red buttons on the motion that we made. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Motion carries. 78 yeses, 16 no's. I'd like to thank everybody for coming.
Mr. Moderator.
I am talking, I, can I talk first?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Canocchioli. So, A, the Wachusett football in cheering regional championship against Plymouth, New Hampshire. The winner goes on to Florida. This will be the first time a Wachusett team has ever gone, has the opportunity to go this far in success. There was a send-off from the high school at 9:00 a.m. on Sunday morning at 9:00 a.m. And Mr. Ross, Mr. Canocchioli first.
51 years I've been coming to town meetings. Forty of those years were at Napvile. Never a problem with the mics. I strongly suggest we leave this beautiful facility where I was the building chairman of, and we go over to Napvile and we use the mics. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
I would like to make a motion. I've got an idea how we make Article 2. I would like a motion, I would like to make a motion to reconsider Article 2, and I was in the majority. I made a motion to reconsider Article 2, and I voted with the majority. Robert's rules is legal to do. I can do that.
So, so, Mr. Ross is correct. Mr. Ross can bring up an article again, and Mr. Ross made a motion to reconsider.
That's correct.
Does Mr. Ross's motion have a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to reconsider. So just to explain, you probably can do it better than I can.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. A motion to reconsider it, the prior article, the thing, Article 10.
2.
2.
2?
I'm sorry. I thought I heard you say 10. Thank you. Article 2. A yes vote would reopen the discussion. A no vote would keep the prior vote as it was. And a motion to reconsider is a simple majority vote. It is not amendable or debatable.
So, do we understand?
No, correction. Sorry. Through you, Mr. Moderator. This one would be because the original motion was debatable. This one would be because the original motion was debatable, so you can have debate on the motion to reconsider, but it is not amendable.
Do we understand? Yep. So there is some noes. Mr. Ross would like to reconsider Article 2 that came up. We are currently going to vote, do we want to bring it back? Do we want to potentially change the vote or keep it the same way? If you want to keep it the same way, you can vote no. Dead article, we all go home. If you vote yes, we can bring that article back up. I believe we can have discussion about Article 2 if it passed favorably, correct?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. If the motion to reconsider passes, debate would be reopened on Article 2.
On Article 2, so we can have debate, hopefully short debate, and then we can revote on Article 2 or make amendments if we choose to.
Can we make any comments on my motion?
No. Uh, yes, he did say yes. Yes, Mr. Ross, please.
If you vote favorably, I got an idea how we can make this all work for recreation, seniors, and the town hall. Just please just vote yes. I will make it short, we'll do it. Thank you.
How do we know that we get your permission? I owe you an expression, I appreciate it. How do we know that?
You've already watched a bunch of people walk out. It's not okay.
And they should have stayed. I've been coming to these meetings for almost 40 years, they should have stayed.
He was already talking like it was over. That's why people get out of the meeting because you said, "We voted on it."
That's... No, he wouldn't let me do it earlier.
I just wanted to clarify, because I wasn't meaning to be disrespectful or dismissive on that. What I'm wondering is, how do we know? So we voted on it as it was written. How do we know that your word will change anything as it was written? Or discuss?
Darren's vision is right here.
I know you, and I, but other than that, like, but convince anyone who doesn't know you.
We have, we have a lot of money in the fund. I'm going to be pleased to add money to take care of the three different banks.
So, I'm just trying to understand this. Wouldn't he...
So, I think we have to give him the benefit of the doubt to do it. We're here to discuss whether we want to reconsider or not. I understand that you want to know what Darren's vision is differently, but...
What I'm saying is, wouldn't he, wouldn't the idea to be, to bring an amendment forward?
We can't do it until we reconsider it.
So until, so this is just to ask to reconsider it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand it. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the decision to reconsider? Are we ready? Is there, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all we're voting on now is to reconsider Article 2. A yes vote brings it back up, a no vote, we go home.
Simple majority.
Simple majority, not two-thirds. All those in favor, please use the green buttons. All those opposed, use the red buttons, please. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Motion goes down, 54 noes, 33 yeses.
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to reconsider Article 10.
Motion's already on the floor to adjourn first. So a motion to reconsider, a motion to adjourn, does that have a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.